Good evening. We have completed our closed-door sessions and would now come back from recess and re-call the regular City Commission meeting to order at 6:36. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Mac McCray, if you please rise.
Let us bow, most holy the eternal God, Lord who created make up all mankind. Fathers, we celebrate this coming weekend Memorial Day celebration. We apologize and say thank you for all of our individuals who served in the armed services of this United States of America. We, Lord, thank you, Lord, for those that are still serving, but we also pray for the fallen ones and their family. We want to thank you most of all as we deliberate tonight, most of all that you guide us and you lead us and make our decision, be those that is pleasing in your sight and your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the liberal with liberty and justice.
Okay, that takes us to the brand promise statement. You'd like to join me? It's time to take a look at Boynton Beach. Boynton Beach is a creative haven embracing artists, writers, entrepreneurs, and dreamers. We have agenda approval. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Patrick.
3G about the Sister City presentation, that isn't going to happen. I talked to my fellow travelers and they felt I wasn't doing it justice, so we're going to delay it two weeks and they're going to put it together.
Okay.
And 6F, I'd like to pull that from the consent agenda.
Okay. Got it? Anybody else?
We're doing consent agenda now as well.
Yeah, we'll go ahead. He starts, so we'll go ahead.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Okay, I'd like to pull 9B and 9C.
9?
B, as in Boy.
Yeah.
And 9C, I'd like to pull them, please.
Okay.
9B and C, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Motion to approve as amended.
Any others? Okay, I have a motion to approve his agendas. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, show the motion unanimous. Takes us to informational items by members of the City Commission. I'll start with Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say, it's not often that I listen to TV and I find such heroic information. And I would just like to say, the other morning when I was in bed and I was listening to the news and I heard this voice that came on, it was Vice Mayor Casello, and it said that he was helping a fellow veteran clean his yard. And I stood up, I said, "Now, that's what you call true service to a community." I want to publicly, Vice Mayor Casello, tell you, "Thank you, we're going beyond the call of duty." That's what we're up here for, not just to make decisions, but also to go and do what we can to help our citizens. I also like to say that I went to Citrus Cove Elementary School for the ribbon cutting of the Judy Diaz Media Center. I also attended the Galaxy Ribbon Cutting here in our city. And on Friday, the chief and I met, we met with the Boynton Beach Ministry Alliance. And we had a very informative but a productive meeting. And I'd just like to say to the chief personally this afternoon, "Thank you for attending that meeting. Thank you." That's it, sir.
Commissioner, okay, thank you. Two points. I also had the privilege, and I use that word very strongly and emphatically, going to the Galaxy School. Walking away from that, what I realized, the wonderful thing that God gave us is a mind, the mind to improve. The school itself is magnificent. The desire and the interest of the children to learn was even more magnificent. Kudos to the Gallic School. Yes, I am getting older. I realized how much more I have to learn. I've got to keep reading my books because I still think I know so little. The other, the other I would like to talk about, and I'll use the word kudos, to the people of Boynton Beach. We had a special event Saturday, all day. And what was wonderful was the participation, the interest, and the love the people had for Boynton Beach. We were there, they were there, let me phrase it that way also. They were there to express their feelings on how they want to see, not just the development of this section, but the development of Boynton Beach. Their involvement was magnificent, and I would love to have more events like that so the people themselves, you can touch the people, you can hear the people, you can listen to the people, and most important, you can learn from the people. And thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Casello?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to expand on what Commissioner McCray was saying, first of all, I was there because our own state rep, Laurie Berman, she coordinated this whole cleanup. She brought the people together to make this happen, and I just happened to be part of it. But I don't want it to go, I wanted to say that it happened and it was so successful because of the Boy Scout Police Explorer Unit led by Sergeant Frank Danish and Rachel Loy, who showed up that Saturday morning. These are teenagers that belong to the Explorer, Police Explorer, their average age is 13, 15. And these young adults, they, to see them in action, to come to a stranger's home and actually do physical work on a Saturday morning was something to behold. It was such a success because of these police explorers. And it was good to be, it was good to be part of that. So I'd like to say thank you to them. Also, Johnny McMahon from the Boynton Fire Department, he was there with his lovely daughter, he pitched in, and we improved the property, I believe, by about 110%. Oh, Laurie, we did a great job, and I thank you for having, making us a part of that. I also attended the Treasure Coast Planning Session at the library. That was good, it was a lot of great ideas. And Commissioner Merc is right, there's a lot of love and foresight for our city here. I'd just like to know where we're going to get the money to do some of that stuff, but it's real hopeful. I also met with Jeffrey Sluggett Associates, along with Ally Soule. She's the Public Affairs Manager for all aboard Florida. We discussed quiet zones, the cost, and also at that same time, we discussed the possible walk and bike paths that might be developed during this construction phase when that happens, which is a good thing. I also met with Chris Brown and Tom Hayden, Bonnie Miskel, representing Morgan Boynton Beach LLC about the progress of the proposed development at 500 Ocean Ave, which was, it's very promising. We've got things there. Hopefully, we'll be seeing things come out of the ground in the near future. Also, I attended the 214th Police Memorial at the Village Royal on the Green to say thank you for the fallen police officers this past year. It was touching, and Chief Cacci did a great job on that, along with attending the Galaxy E3 dedication at the Galaxy Elementary. I don't think that's a school, it's more of a museum. It was unbelievable. If you ever get a chance, people, please stop in there and just tour that school. It is state of the art, really. I could spend all day in there. It was just, it was a wonderful time, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
On May 8th, I had the honor of representing the city at the French Legion of Merit Ceremony at the Civic Center, where about 15 WWII vets received awards from a French paratrooper general. Tom Kaiser did a great job. I, it was very moving and touching, and I became so inspired, I've decided that I'm going to Bastogne December 15th for the 70th anniversary of the Battle of Bulge, and I'm going to walk the 12-mile memorial walk, which is the perimeter of the line held by the 101st Airborne Division until Patton's 3rd Army broke through to bring them supplies. I attended the, and if anybody else wants to go, you know, we make a party of it. I attended the Chamber Luncheon, May 14th. On May 15th, I missed the Galaxy Elementary Tour because I had scheduling conflict and went to the Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. Immediately following that, like the mayor and Commissioner Casello, we went to the Police Memorial Ceremony at Village Royale on the Green. May 16th, I also met with the Les Cesse reps and Bonnie Miskel. After that, I went to, that night to, I'm not sure today, Tucson School fundraiser in Delray Beach, mainly supporting Haitian students. And then the next day, I went, I attended the Treasure Coast Planning Sharette at the library. And then yesterday, kind of by mistake, I found out, I attended three hours of the 11th Annual Florida-Japan Summit at the Morikami Museum of Japanese Garden, which was on our calendar, but it didn't really have much relevance to Boynton, but it was interesting nevertheless.
That's it.
I did most of the things that already been mentioned, very quickly, the Police Memorial, Representatives for the 500 Ocean Project, I met with them. Treasure Coast Meeting on Saturday did that, and the Galaxy School did that tour, and the Chamber Luncheon, so all of them were great, and I was glad to have been there. Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, since we're doing disclosure, I did meet with Bonnie Miskel on the 500 Sea Project as well.
Very good, thank you. Okay, that takes us to announcements, community and special events presentations. I have a proclamation for Civility Month. There's no one here to accept this, so I'm going to read it right from the dais here. Whereas, the open exchange of public discourse is essential to the democratic system of government and as a cornerstone of democracy. Americans has observed certain rules of behavior generally known as civility. Whereas civility derived from the Latin words civitas, meaning city, and civis, meaning citizen, is behavior worthy of citizens living in a community or in common with others. And whereas displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatient, and a lack of respect and personal attacks detract from the open exchange of ideas, prevent fair discussion of the issues, and can discourage individuals from participation in government. And whereas civility can assist in reaching consensus on diverse issues, allow for mutually respectful, ongoing relationships, uplift our daily life, and make it more pleasant to live in an organized society. And whereas the city, county, and local government law section of the Florida bar urges the adoption of a pledge of civility by all citizens in the state of Florida. Now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do recognize May 2014 as Civility Month, and call upon the citizens to exercise civility toward each other. A witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand, and cause the seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be fixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, 20th day of May 2014. Our next piece of business will be a legislative update by Representative Laurie Berman of District 90. Good evening and thank you for being here.
Good evening, is this on? Yeah, okay. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, citizens of Boynton Beach, I'm so happy to be here, representing all of you, and to give you a little bit of an update about what happened this past legislative session. We concluded in the beginning of May, so that's the good news, because sometimes people refer to that as the most dangerous days in the state of Florida, especially that last week. And we passed a budget of about $77 billion. It's a pretty big budget. Things are looking much better for the state of Florida. In 2009, which was just five years ago, our budget was $66 billion, so there's an additional $10 billion that's in the budget from that five years ago when we were in severe trouble. The good news is, we didn't have to cut. In the, in those bad years, we had to really cut a lot of programs, and this year, there was some money for some extra items. Palm Beach County has a great legislative delegation, all of us work together, and we have wonderful people who also work for the delegation, and we did, I think, particularly well this year in budget items. You'll see some of the things. One of the biggest projects that we got was $7 million for a new district courthouse. The courthouse has mold, and it's very old, and so hopefully, they're going to be doing a new courthouse. We also got money, again, $6 million for a new campus of Palm Beach State College to be in Loxahatchee Groves. We've had that in the budget in years past, and the governor has vetoed it. We're very hopeful that this year he won't, because there really is a need for that new campus in Loxahatchee Groves. Everything I say, which I'm going to talk about, recognize that the governor still has veto power, and there are still things that could change, but I'll, you know, as I go through my report a little bit, you'll understand. We did fund education, we increased education, but unfortunately, the school funding levels are still below the 2007 levels, so I'm a little disappointed on the per pupil funding. I wish we had put a little bit more into education. And the other thing is, I think we talked last year about how the budget did not cover the expansion of Medicaid, and once again this year, we did not do that. So there are about 800,000 working Floridians, because remember, the people who get Medicaid now are the people who don't work. The people who are falling in this gap are working Floridians who are not qualifying for health care because the legislature has not done it. It's about $51 billion from the federal government, and it's our taxpayer money. So we continue to be a donor state in a lot of regards because we don't take that, the money from the federal government on that issue. And it's very troubling to me, and I could not support the budget this year, but there are a lot of really good things in the budget, and overall, I think we're going in the right direction, but hopefully, we'll start spending, you know, hopefully, there'll be a change on the Medicaid money and maybe on the education, more emphasis on that. The, the really, the most troubling thing that happened, I think, from your point of view, is that we once again did not get any sober home legislation passed this year. We worked really hard. The bill was sponsored, it was a bipartisan bill. In the Senate, it was Senator Clemens, and in the House, it was Representative Hager. So it was all Palm Beach County supporting it. There were two versions of the bill, and I think that was part of the problem. One version called for the sober homes to have voluntary registration, and the other was a mandatory registration. And they sort of went on separate tracks, and at the very end, they just didn't come together. And it's really disappointing, and we're very upset about it. I am going to be the Chair of the Legislative Delegation from Palm Beach County next year, and I promise to you that this will be one of our priorities, and we are going to work to do it. We are also working with the federal government. Our delegation is going to Washington DC and talking to them about the issue. So it's possible that we'll get something done on a rulemaking version with the federal government, and so that we can start to address this issue, and that it won't have to wait until March, when the legislature meets again. But we will, I promise to you that we will continue to work on that issue. And just for the audience, what it is, is, you know, there's many sober homes that are in the, in different neighborhoods, including a big focus in Delray, Lake Worth, some in Boynton Beach. And right now, they're not register, regulated in any way. People don't know where they are. It's very, and there's some really good actors, and there's some really bad actors. And there are, some of the bad actors are just sending people out in the middle of the night who have nowhere to go. So we want to help protect the good actors, and we also want to help protect the people who are getting the treatment for drug and alcohol rehabilitation, the people who are in the sober homes. We want to make sure they're protected also. So it's a very delicate balance because of the Americans with Disabilities Act, but we are going to continue to work on that issue. There were no changes to the communication sales tax, so there won't be any difference as far as money as that goes. There was a lot of discussion about preemption issues, but in the end, the only preemption issue actually worked in your favor, and it had to do with time shares. And they said that you can still rate, they took away some of the preemption on the time shares and said you can still, you can on a local level regulate time shares, but you can't regulate duration and frequency. So I'll let your attorney work with you if you want to change, do some changes on time share regulations, but it was good news because we actually gave more power back to the locals on that issue because we had taken it away, and it turned out it was, is a pretty bad move. The other bill that we passed that affects you directly had to do with, I think, Okeechobee County, and they had a meeting with another, one, a local city had a meeting with another city, and they did it more than five miles away, and they said that wasn't allowed, so now we changed the law. So if you wanted to have a city council meeting in a place that was five miles away with another community, you would be allowed to. So we only passed about 250 bills this session, which is a very small number. I think it's the smallest, typically, we pass about 350. So there, it was a quiet session, and there wasn't a lot of controversy. Most of the things that went through were fairly non-controversial. I mean, there were some issues along the way. But, so it really worked out pretty well, I think, for, for the cities and counties this year and for Palm Beach County. And I do want to talk a little bit about that little cleanup that we did on Saturday. I drove by the house tonight on my way here, and it looks fabulous. It really looks great. And I do want to thank the, I guess it's, the Police Explorers, they did an amazing job. And I spoke to one of the girls and thanked her, and she said, "I couldn't think of a better place I'd rather be on Saturday morning," and it made me so proud. They really, they really chipped in, and this is what it's all about. It's all about helping each other and community, and thank you for the opportunity to do so. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Berman. Mr. Merc?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a statement. What you said, I found very positive, except for one, one item which I find the most important, and that's the Medicaid. That's been professionally my expertise for 30-plus years. I would love to volunteer if you need someone who you feel is knowledgeable, because, as you know, and the people know, that Medicaid is a federal and a state program in which the state is to carry it out, the federal government is to participate financially, and obviously, the budget of the state also should be presented and rectified in some area there. So to me, that's the most upsetting, and the reason I say that, Laurie, is the fact that now that Florida is the third most populated state in the country, and people are going to be moving here even more, this, to me, is the most, of all the items you said, personally speaking, this is the most essential item, that you're dealing with people 65 and older that are not getting the treatment that they need, and I'd love to volunteer if you think I'm qualified.
Thank you very much. I mean, that's absolutely why I couldn't support the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, you know, it's very troubling. And also, when you think about it, not only are we not getting the $51 billion, but we're having to fill in holes in our budget for where we could have had, I, there were numbers put out about how much extra we would have had to be able to spend on other projects in the state if we had that money.
And one more statement, kudos to the mayor, where he's been pushing something for medical help. Well, one of the biggest issues dealing with medical help is the aging. It's not just the young, and the mayor has stepped up to the plate, obviously, and has pushed forward in a very positive way, this, this theme. But the theme of having Medicaid backing the cost, which also entails medical, is essential for the state of Florida.
Thank you. Thank you again very much. Appreciate all your work and effort, and looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a proclamation for National Safe Boating Week, and I believe we have some people here from the Marine Safety and Environmental Protection, if you'd join me at the podium down here. Yes, we have Valerie Pleasanton, the flotilla commander, and Otto Spielbeckler, flotilla staff officer. Is that correct?
Correct.
Hope I didn't ruin, hurt that name too bad. That's very good. Okay. Whereas, an average of 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the US, approximately 71% of these are fatalities caused by drowning, and the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. I think I was supposed to wear a life jacket, but I don't see it here, so. Whereas, today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past, and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. Now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign, and proclaim May 17th through the 24th, 2014, as National Safe Boating Week, and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. A witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand, and cause the seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be fixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the 20th day of May 2014. We thank you for your efforts, and if you'd like to say something, you want to welcome. Thank you very much.
We'd just like to make everyone aware that this is a National Safe Boating Week campaign, and all of the Coast Guard, Coast Guard Auxiliary, Power Squadron, there's a lot of different groups involved in this. What our goal is, to make everyone aware that there are a lot of safety things that you can do whenever you go out. As you know, we have a very long coastline in Florida. Well, we also have many of the boating deaths here. So we'd like to remind you to wear your life jacket. We'd like to remind you to take a safe boating class. We offer them at the Boynton Ramps the last Saturday of each month. We'd like to remind you to get a vessel safety check. We'll double-check your boat and all the equipment on it, and make sure you have everything that you need. This is free, so take advantage of the services that we offer. We're here for you. We'd like to make sure that everyone is safe and we have no boating fatalities in Boynton Beach for the rest of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Laura Corey here for intergovernmental liaison to accept the Water Reuse Week proclamation. Whereas, safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Florida's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors, and Florida's water supplies are finite. While our population and our need for water resources continues to increase, and whereas water reuse provides a means for conserving and augmenting Florida's precious water resources, and Florida has established the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objectives in Chapters 373 and 403 Florida statutes. And whereas Florida's permitted reuse capacity exceeds 1.7 billion gallons per day, more than 67% of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic wastewater treatment facilities. And Florida leads the nation in using 725 million gallons of reclaimed water each day to conserve freshwater supplies and to recharge our freshwater resources. Whereas, the state of Florida has declared the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2014, to be Water Reuse Week in Florida, and the City of Boynton Beach has joined with the state of Florida, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the South Florida Water Management District in encouraging and promoting water reuse and conservation. And whereas, the City of Boynton Beach has implemented a water reuse program and encourages efficient and effective use of reclaimed water. Now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2014, as Water Reuse Week in the City of Boynton Beach, and call upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water conservation and to use reclaimed water in an efficient and effective means. A witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand, and cause the seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be fixed this 20th day of May in the year 2014. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of our Executive Director, Blake Gilery, and our governing board, I want to thank the City of Boynton Beach, especially our mayor and the commission, because you have been strong supporter of reuse, and one of the largest reuse projects that we ever moved forward happened several years ago, and it was with the approval of Boynton Beach Delray and the water treatment plant. So, you know, reuse is a way to expand our potable water, which is a finite resource. So by being able to use reuse on our lawns and other areas, it's a great way to conserve the potable water. So again, thank you very much for all you do for the water resource.
Thank you.
Next, we will present a plaque to David Cordray, tennis pro at Hunter's Run by a member of the Education Youth Advisory Board, in appreciation for his contribution to the tennis carnival.
A couple of weeks ago, the Education and Youth Advisory Board held a tennis carnival at Hunter's Run. I must thank, as we all must, those members of the Hunter's Run Board. I must thank, as we all must, those members of the Hunter's Run Board who permitted us to come, and to the professional tennis players who took the kids and had some games and fun, and we had a wonderful time. The head pro is Mr. David Cordray, who is here, and we appreciate all that you've done for the kids, and we want to present you with not this plaque, but something different.
Okay. Just a, just a note, they wanted to remind everybody, it's Sunday at 2:00 P.M., the Veterans Council will be celebrating the veterans thing at the memorial at the, at the Boynton Cemetery, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so, 2:00 P.M. on Sunday. Okay, now, we have the announcement of the annual change to free chlorination of the water supply from May 30, 2014, through June 13, 2014. Do you want me to read that?
You know what? Yes, that's exactly what I would do.
The city of Boynton Beach will temporarily modify the disinfection process utilized to treat its drinking water from May 30, 2014, through June 13, 2014. Customers may notice a slight chlorine taste or odor in their tap water. These temporary conditions will not cause adverse health effects. Those sensitive to the taste or odor of chlorine can place an open container of drinking water in the refrigerator for a few hours to allow the chlorine to dissipate. Users of home dialysis machines, owners of tropical fish, and managers of stores and restaurants with fish and shellfish holding tanks are advised to seek professional advice as the method for removing chlorine residuals differs from removing chloramine residuals from tap water. This is a preventive maintenance process in order to maintain the city's high standard of clean water distribution. For more information, you can call 561-742-6964. That's 742-6964. There'll be no impact on our services, and the water supply will be maintained. So, that's informational. At this time, we'll go to public audience. Anybody who'd like to address the commission on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask that you come to the podium and give your name and address for the record, and try to make your comments in a three-minute time period.
Mr. Mayor, as they're lining up, I'd like to just go ahead and recognize former Commissioner Carl McCoy, who's in our audience this afternoon, who I had the pleasure of serving six years plus on this commission for the city of Boynton.
Good evening.
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Mark Perry, and procedurally, I'm not sure how things are handled, and I apologize for my ignorance. I'd like to be able to speak on item 13A, B, I'm sorry, 13B. Will I have time to be able to speak on that item at that time? I represent an affected party who owns property next door to this site.
13B, you have to do that when it comes up on the agenda.
Okay, so, I'll be given time at that time?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I apologize.
My name is Christine Encinoza. I believe I'm in a similar quandary of the gentleman there. I'm not sure how to proceed. 13A is the proposed ordinance for the dog-friendly parks is in a first reading.
Address that when it comes up on the agenda.
Which, will you allow the audience? Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. I just have a handful of announcements this evening. We are really delighted to announce that three museum educational programs have been certified by the Palm Beach School District and for in-house field trips, and that's for ages pre-K through grade two. And what that means is that schools are able to come to the museum for these programs, and the busing is free. So, they'll be able to, we can increase traffic through that, through that manner, and we're going to continue to work on more programs and have them certified through the school board. On June 6, we invite everyone to join us from 9:00 A.M., excuse me, 8:00 A.M. until 9:00 A.M. for networking over easy in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. There will be networking, a light breakfast, and you might even have a little fun and explore your inner child. As a reminder, Summer Rocks with the Palm Beach Pops is coming up June 16 through June 19 with a free concert at the library on June 20 at 9:00 A.M. And lastly, tickets for the Fourth of July VIP party and fundraiser are on sale now, and they are available both online, or you can call the museum for tickets. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Suzanne.
Yes.
Mayor, may I have Suzanne mentioned? Last time she was here, we were talking about the Great Give and the fundraising effort. Tell the public and the commission how much you raised.
The Great Give was a wild success, not only for, was a great success for the museum, and also a great, incredible success throughout the county. Almost $2 million was raised throughout the county. For the museum itself, in a 24-hour period, we raised $2,820, and we will receive some bonus dollars from a bonus pool as well. That amount has, remains to be determined, but we consider it a great success. Our goal was 3,000, and we've clearly achieved it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission this time? Yes.
Mayor, thank you. Do I, you need my name?
Yes, your name and address.
Steve Waldman. I live at Socolito Place, 41 Socolito Place. I'm here to alert you to concerns about the Children's Services Council. There are, the Children's Services Council has had to cut staff. It has lost some monies in the last several years, and it's done a marvelous job helping kids, helping nonprofits, helping teens to find self-esteem in programs that they have run. And I will provide the commission and the city manager with a resolution to support the Children's Services Council as soon as I can get to the, get to the facts. A member, someone who is supporting the Children's Service Council will be coming to my board meeting on Thursday, and I'll, we'll have a resolution there, and hopefully, our board will support. But I wanted to alert you to this resolution to support the Children's Services Council. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Herb Suss, 1711 Woodford, Boynton Beach. I would like to, through the mayor, thank Commissioner Fitzpatrick, who has, from last Armistice Day and before, to now make a trip to Bastogne, and the support makes me feel good as a marine vet to hear, to see him active, and that, to me, is a big supporter for veterans and remembrance. And like we get, thank you for your service. I want to thank him for his participation in all these situations. And Commissioner Fitzpatrick, after the meeting, I'd like to talk to you about that trip to Bastogne. Another kudo through the mayor to Fitzpatrick, Commissioner. His lead on global warming, I feel good about it because he's a CRA member, so am I. And we, with this water reuse, it's a good thing, and we have to watch our water. We need more and more, and hopefully, through the commissioner and through the city, more and more education, and that's what we need, to let the people know what's up with, because global warming is here. Icebergs in the last two weeks have broken off in one of the poles, and now expect four inches of water. This is a very serious situation. It's not, it's not yesterday, not tomorrow, it's here today. We've got to watch our water intrusion, and we may have to think about de-stalinization. But the public has to wake up and get their members of Congress on the ball to start getting and taking this area seriously. So, again, I commend, and I'll be working in this field in the future on global warming because it's here, and it's everybody's problem. We have to get, and we have good leadership between Lori and Karice that's leading an effort on this, and God bless both of them, and Commissioner Fitzpatrick and the rest of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Anton, 234 Southeast Second Avenue. Just wanted to commend everybody. It was a, on Saturday, at the event on the library about the Treasure Coast, did their presentation, brought up some great ideas, got a lot of input from a lot of great people. Really looking forward to see that results. And just like I said, it was just a great bunch of people, all the citizens, a lot of them came out there, put up some great ideas. I feel very encouraged about having that input, being able to be able to see it hopefully come forth with some great ideas for this whole area. And I really appreciate that, like I said, the gentleman that put it on said nobody had mentioned tearing down the high school, and that's a good thing. We like that, and everybody, all the citizens at the presentations were for preserving it and possibly going in some directions that will really help our city by, like I said, bringing in the right sort of people and the right way. And that, I saw this weekend, that we can really develop for 20 years from now, something that will be sustainable economically and environmentally, and be very friendly, and make Boynton something of a rose in Palm Beach County, which it already is, but it just needs to bloom. It's a rose that hasn't bloomed yet, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commissioner this time? Seeing none, we will close the public audience, move to administrative. There are no applicants for any of the boards tonight, but we do have item B is accept the resignation. Mark Carey George, a regular member of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board, and discuss appointment of a replacement. Is there a motion to accept his resignation?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. With regrets, I do sit up here tonight and say I offered a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Mark Carey George for personal reasons from this board.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have most second, all in favor.
Aye.
Show the most unanimous, and we appreciate Mr. Carey George's service to this board. We now would like to discuss appointment of a replacement. Commissioner Merker?
What I'd like to do is postpone this. The reason for this is that I feel there'll be several people from the city who would be interested and need a timetable. Already, we've gotten three or four responses, and I think that we should wait a little while to see, say, another week or two at the most, to see who else responds to this so we can get, hopefully, the most qualified, enlightening, intelligent person to be on this board, since this is one of the two most important boards that run the city.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We've got a couple of applications, and one I was really impressed with was this Linda Cross. Outstanding, impeccable resume, and she'd be a great asset on the CRA board. But with that being said, I think that what we are, where we are at with the CRA, we have some multimillion-dollar projects about ready to break. I think we need to have somebody appointed to fill out Mr. Carey George's term, who can hit the road running, who is, who is familiar with what we've been dealing with over the last couple of months. And I would like to put former mayor, former city commissioner, Woodrow Hay's name in nomination.
I have a nomination. Is there a second?
I'm going to go ahead and second that, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Are there discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Fitzpatrick, now go back.
Well, yeah, I think before we pick somebody tonight, I mean, if we do, I don't really have a strong opinion either way, but I think we should dispose of Commissioner Merker's request to delay till the next meeting.
That was just his suggestion. Commissioner Merker?
Yes. Well, this is an important item for the city. It's that important. And I understand and I respect what Vice Mayor Casello said. However, one of the interesting platforms, and I'll use that word, I'm going to say three different points, is the for or against term limits. Now, yes, this is for citizens, but the continuation to have the same people on the board is not very enlightening to a city. Vice Mayor Casello mentioned this woman, Linda Cross, and obviously, I've interviewed her personally. Her qualifications are beyond all of ours who are sitting before yours. She's a CPA, she's a financial master's in finance, she served on nonprofit boards. This is an exception to the rule as far as ability. As far as stepping up to the plate, there's no question about it. Her background is superior. This is what she did for a livelihood. With all due respect to former Vice Mayor Hay, I use the term again, term limits, he had his day for a while. Let's bring in new blood. And how about this idea? As I look and I see, very interesting, on the CRA board, on the commission, not one woman. So, when you want to enlighten and bring in new ideas and set forth a new image, then let's bring new people who have the energy, the expertise, the true intellect, and that's what this woman has, and of course, she's a woman, that'll add another flavor, another, another bit of humor, and another bit of sensitivity to what this city needs. So, I urge emphatically, indubitably, and definitely that we postpone this and see who else, his name will come forth, and then we should determine, and maybe even interview. Because right away, we're assuming, because we know and we've touched a person who's been here, that that automatically is the right person. I disagree. Fellow, excuse me, fellow commissioner, Vice Commissioner Casello, Commissioner Fitzpatrick, and yours truly, were new commissioners. And my story and my history says that when the mayor ran for the first time, he wasn't a commissioner, he ran right for mayor. So, to think that a person with this expertise is non-qualified to be on this board, the CRA, I find ludicrous and ridiculous.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read the summation of Mrs. Cross, but I'm going to sit up here and state, you know, Commissioner Merker, since you said that she's more qualified than any of us that are sitting up here, sir, perhaps she might be more qualified than you. I don't think she's more qualified than me, why, because I've served on the CRA board before, and I'm already up here, and I'm just saying, you know, sometimes we have to choose our words. I'm just saying, her resume is fine. It looks good, sir. I'm still talking.
Yes, sir.
It looks good. But my whole take is that, you know, resumes are nice, but I'm just saying, experience do count, and I'm just saying, you know, whether we postpone it or not, I'm just saying, if we open it up to other candidates and everything, I'm just saying, you know, for summation, I'm saying that she's more qualified than any of us sitting up here. It's really like a slap in my face, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry that I slapped you in the face, but look at her credentials. This is what she did her whole life. She was a CPA, she was a financial major. I don't look at it as a slap in the face. I look at it that what I've done in my life, I'm in insurance. I accept that you as a lawyer, or you as a business owner, or you as whatever you did, that was your expertise. You have more knowledge. That's not a slap in the face. It's acknowledging that someone could add so much to this city because she's so advanced in the areas of finance, budgeting, et cetera.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me just go ahead and finish. I'm just saying, for somebody that said that she did something her whole life, and said that she did it only for 20 years, I'm just saying.
30 years, 30-plus years.
Well, plus, I'm just saying.
You've got to read it.
It's not her, it's not her whole life, sir. I'm just saying, you know, you had your point, you made your statement, I'm making mine. And I'm going to sit up in debate with you, I'm just saying.
It's not a debate, it's fact. Six years as commissioner versus 30-some years.
I'm sorry. Point of order, point of order. I would just say that I agree with what Vice Mayor Casello said. I think that former mayor, Woodrow Hay, could step right in tomorrow and pick it up. We've got a lot on our agenda. CRA, we're moving forward, and I don't want to see any break in that action, so I would support his motion. Commissioner Casello?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I'd like, I'd just like to say that no elected position or appointed position should be based on gender. That should be taken right out of the equation. It's all about qualification. This Miss Cross, she has an impeccable resume. My contention is that we have multimillion-dollar projects on the table, ready to come out of the ground. Mr. Hay is very familiar with all of that. That's the experience I'd like to see come to the table when we're making those decisions. Thank you.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
So, my question was, are we doing it tonight, or are we doing it?
Yeah, I'd like to, well, I have a motion and a second to go ahead and point Woodrow Hay to fill the, Mark Carey George's position on CRA. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Emphatically opposed.
Show the motion passes four to one.
Excuse me, please. Excuse me, please. It's a disgrace that we don't interview new people who want to put their heart and soul and mind into this city, and we stay in the past. That's the purpose of growth. That's the purpose of development. That's what this city needs, is development and growth, and what we're doing, we're stagnant. We're staying still. And when you say gender is not a factor, we haven't had a woman who's President of the United States, okay? So the point is, you say, the point is, change is good, it's healthy, open your mind, your heart, and look in the mirror, that this woman is so qualified, and it's incredible. You say the experience of someone, look at the growth of the city. It's growing, it's not growing? This woman could put the input of her expertise.
Commissioner, you made those, you made those points.
I made it because it's so disgraceful that we won't even interview these people.
You lost the vote. We go to the consent agenda. Item F was pulled, I believe it was pulled by Commissioner Fitzpatrick. Approve the list of top-ranked proposals as determined by the evaluation committee from the submissions received in response to the request for the proposal for progressive design build for ion exchange resin plant and east water treatment plant improvements.
Well, I think this should be a roll call vote, because I don't think it was correct the way the oral presentation was tacked on after it was stated it was gonna be 100 points for judgment, and it ended up being doubled to 200. And I think a more equitable way would have been to do it is, there was two sections for the oral presentation, 60 points and 40, and I think a person should have been judged, like, if they got 50 points, then it was 50 out of 60 would be, I don't know, 18%, 17% or something like that, and leaving 83, so you should have multiplied .83 times that particular of the original 100 points or something. But just to double it like that without proper notice, I don't agree with. So if you want to vote on it, I don't think it's, I don't want my name on a consent agenda for that.
City Attorney, I think we voted three to two, and he was not on the common side, so I don't think he called for a revote.
That particular issue was resolved at the last commission meeting. The bid protest was denied. The matter before the commission tonight is to accept the recommendations of the evaluation committee, which then would lead to negotiations with CDM. The alternative to the commission would be to reject the recommendations, and you would go back to square one in the process of selecting somebody.
Is there a motion?
Well, I have a point of information.
I have a motion, one more, I'll get this guy. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? I have a second, the motion to approve the listing of the evaluation committee.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Do I have an opportunity to say something with respect to this, since it was on the, it is an agenda item?
Yes, it was pulled off, so he can address it.
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Thaddeus Buckley, I'm with MWH Constructors, and just like to make a couple of quick points with respect to Mr. Fitzpatrick's assertion that he just asserted. First off, we understand, and we really appreciate your time at the last commission meeting, listening to our point of view. The big, there's two points that I wanted to really emphasize, which is, I've sat in this commission chamber, for the most part, every commission meeting since the very beginning of this process, going back to January. And I understand that the commissioners' main focus is, is to do the, be fiscally responsible, whether it's from dog parks to stormwater improvements, or in whatever the case may be, the commissioners have always listened to reason with respect to cost and budgetary concerns. My, our issue on the presentation was not that the presentation took place, it was the fact that the points, which is...
Sir, I could interrupt you because you're off topic to the issue.
Okay.
The motion was very specific.
Okay.
It's not to revisit the issue, which you are doing of the bid protest.
Okay, I apologize for that.
So please bring it back to the motion at hand.
I apologize. So about this, the, it was not about that, like I said, it was more about best value to me, and the best value to this, for the city of Boynton Beach. And with the 7.5%, when the points were doubled, 7.5% is the cost. The total cost was now 7.5% of the evaluation as opposed to 15%. That was one point. The other point was the fact that with that price difference, the difference in fee was 6%. Now, there was a lot of debate last, last time with respect to the budget was established, and the cost was not known. That's correct. The budget is not known. But for every $10 million of costs spent on that job, the difference in fee will be $600,000. So if the budget is 30 million dollars, which is what the posted budget is for this job, that equates to $1.8 million on fee on top of cost of work. So the cost of work might be $25 million, in which case, the city of Boynton Beach would be paying about $1.5 million more. If it's $35 million, the city of Boynton Beach would be paying about $2 million more. So that is where, and knowing that the city is very fiscally, takes fiscal matters very seriously, I think it was reducing the percentage from 15% of the evaluation to 7.5% of the evaluation was something that the commission should have and could have definitely been aware of prior to that decision being made quite arbitrary, to be honest. And it was, and it's easy fix. You can take the actual percentage points, multiply by 0.8%.
The attorney, I think this is getting back into arguing the same old.
It is. We're revisiting the big issue, which was before.
Okay, I apologize. I just want, I felt I needed to...
I think you made your point a second time, so.
Okay.
Let's move on, please.
All right, thank you very much, your time.
It's up to you.
This gentleman over here first. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Joe Goldstein, I'm an attorney with Chutson Bowen. It's my pleasure to write, to represent CDM Smith. We fully support staff's evaluation of ranking CDM Smith, number one. You had three very good companies, all very experienced, all in this area. You had five staff members who are subject matter experts in this area, and in all four categories of the evaluation, experience, cost and fee, approach in oral presentation, in all of those areas except one, CDM Smith was evaluated number one. In the cost, on the, on the cost, we were even evaluating number one. It was only in the fee that it was switched between MWH and CDM Smith. We support your staff's evaluation, and we look forward to negotiating a contract with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got two questions, and if I could call up Mr. Tim Howard here.
Colin, you might want to come up as well.
Just two simple questions. Regardless of how much the projects cost, are, will MWH's doing business fee of 3.75 result in savings to the city than the CDM's fee of 9.8? No matter how much this project costs, will it save the city money? Yes or no?
If those are the fees that are negotiated, it would. We haven't negotiated. Those fees can be changed during negotiation. Those are fees given as part of the, as part of the proposal. The RFP did state that those fees can be negotiated after the rankings are approved and after we start negotiating with the number-one ranked firm.
So, okay, so that 9.8, they could change it down to 3.75 to match MDH's?
We can negotiate a rate. What it is, I don't know yet. We can't start negotiating until we're directed to do so.
But as it stands right now, if those rates were to stand through the whole project, the city would save money going with the other company, correct?
3.7, well, I'm not sure. 3.75 is probably too low, so there's probably some cost that'll go elsewhere in the project. The standard fees are between 5 and 6% industry-wide on these projects.
I believe those are the numbers they gave us.
But those are the numbers they gave us, so if, if...
So they're gonna go up on those numbers on us?
If everything else is equal, then the 9% is more than the 3.75, so you, they would save money if those are the numbers that go forward.
So I'd like to deal, if we were to deal with this contract today, forget the further negotiations, the city would save $1.8 million, basically, as it stands today?
I wish I could answer that. I can't answer that number.
Well, that's the, that's the material I've been getting, that's the...
It would be, it would save the difference between the two, which is 6% over the cost of the project.
So we save money?
Yes, those numbers, correct.
Thank you. Second question, Tim. In the selection committee, allowed to use evaluation criteria outside the criteria of the RFP. What's in that RFP? Does it say that we can change to add points to oral arguments?
Says that the proposals themselves will be evaluated based on a number of criteria, and once the ranking is done, we're, we have the option as a city to request oral presentations.
And to add points to that oral?
It didn't say add points, it said request oral presentations.
So we just added the points on because?
Because if, if we didn't, there was no way, there was no use to do the oral presentations. If we needed the oral presentations for clarifications, we needed to evaluate them some way.
Is the RFP is gonna be changed to add, so it does state that we will add points?
We'll make modifications to.
The modifications to that to the future?
On individual ones, that orals may be or may not, and what the impact would be.
Thanks, Tim. Mr. Mayor, you know, I was one of the no votes for this, and I'm very concerned that we overstepped our bounds on this one here, and that there might be some legal ramifications coming down the road, and I'm real not comfortable with this.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but again, this is always discussed at that last meeting, and we took a vote, and it really shouldn't be discussed, that's not what we're discussing here tonight.
I have a point of information to, for staff. Now, on our backup, it says there's two alternatives. Accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee to award the contract to CDM, and number two is reject the recommendations of the evaluation committee, reject all bids, and direct city staff to reissue the RFP for the project. Well, how come that's the only two? I mean, is it possible to have a third alternative, which just says, reject the recommendation of the evaluation committee, period?
Then the project wouldn't go forward.
That's in essence of rejecting the bids. I mean, I think one goes hand in hand.
Yeah, so then the direction would be to go back out, start all over, and go out to bid again.
Well, wait a minute, you...
You don't have the latitude to change the ranking, if that's where I think you're going, Mike.
Well, whereas to say we have to pick the top-ranked.
Well, we negotiate with the top-ranked. If we're happy with our negotiations, we discontinue that and we move to number two.
Sir, this is a discussion now amongst the commission. You can sit down unless you're called back up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Why, you know, staff makes a recommendation, but why do we have to accept staff's recommendation?
Because the recommendation process was also embedded in the request for proposal aspect, so that's part of the process that is dictated by the documents to date.
So we don't have the latitude to reject the top recommendation?
No, because you have the authority, when the contract comes back to you, not to accept that that particular point, which is really the equivalent of number two, but delayed. I think we've outlined the two legal alternatives for you tonight.
So there's no way we can accept changing the ranking without rejecting the bids, all the bids?
That's my opinion, yes.
Okay.
You run in the meeting.
Oh.
I second this.
Okay, a second.
It's up to him.
Simply, I voted yes last time, I will continue to vote yes.
I understand the confusion of everybody. I think the thing that's somewhat misguided is the dollar amount, but the evaluation and the reason I personally am going by the expertise of our city employees is for that simple reason. The numbers are not written in stone, they're not written in blood. I just simply feel that the company that we picked is well-qualified. Let's not make something more confusing than it is. We believe that this, that the company, CDM, is the right company. As far as the legal question, and that's a good question that was brought up, that's why we have a city attorney that is here to advise us, and I respect his knowledge, his qualification, and his decision-making, and I would like to vote yes.
Vice Mayor, I ask that you call a question.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the list of top-ranked proposals determined by the evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
Nays. Passes three to two.
I request a roll call vote.
Please call the roll.
No?
Aye.
No?
Yes, emphatically.
Takes us to a public hearing. The first one is approve the request for an 18-month extension of an approved site plan for the Gateway Hotel project located on the west side of the Lakewood Drainage District canal between Gateway Boulevard and Quantum Boulevard.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
We have this, we have discussion.
Well, I have a motion and a second first, gotta get that on the floor.
Second?
I have a motion and a second.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here?
Applicant?
Point of information, don't you have to show that somebody left a podium, I mean, the dais?
Well, he just went to the bathroom.
No.
Okay.
You want to come forward and give your name and address, and if you have any comments?
The review of a site plan request for extension is the same as a site plan approval, being that they are both quasi-judicial. Anybody who intends to testify in this proceeding, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. The applicant has the responsibility to outline the request for their extension. Want to go first, please, announce who you are and what you're representing.
Yes, John Vaughn with Art and Architecture. Our address is 1055 Southwest 15th Avenue, Suite 7, Delray Beach, Florida. What we have done is, the time period that we have gone through with the economy has been very rough. Things have turned around, if you've read the Palm Beach Post, it's, should I go ahead? The Palm Beach Post has talked about how the occupancy rate is so high, and how everything is going so well, and our owner is prepared, everything is in place for us to proceed, and we're very grateful if we can do just that, and so what we're just asking for is an extension. So we've mapped out our, how we're going to get that done in a timely manner. It's not just to get it re-approved, just to get this project on the road and get it done.
Thank you. Staff, did you want to make some comments?
I really have nothing to add, other than it's subject to the conditions of approval, should you be of a mind to approve the item tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Casello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we chosen a, is it gonna be the Marriott or the Hilton?
The Marriott.
It's gonna be the Marriott.
Yes.
I went to the planning and development meeting that you, when you presented the thing, your case there, and I believe, is it John Costas?
Yes, he's out of town.
He's out of town. He called me. What's, what's his relation to this project?
He's one of the owners.
He's one of the owners. He personally called me, and I had a conversation with him, and this has been going on, like, it's in my district, that's why I have a personal interest in it. It's been on the board since 2010. Okay, I asked him if he would, he'd be up to reducing the extension to 12 months from 18 months. He said he had no problem with that.
No, we sat down and looked at it, and it's still doable, so if that is what would make the city more comfortable, we're fine with that.
I would feel more comfortable with a 12-month extension on this. It's been, like I say, on the board since 2010. I think they're ready to come out of the ground in October, I believe he said to me. So if we can reduce that 18-month to 12-month, I have no problem with it, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
I, just a point of information from staff. My understanding with like codes and building codes and stuff like that, they usually get updated every three years, more or less, so since this has been going on so long, my question is, under which set of codes will this go forward?
Seeing as no building plans have been submitted yet, it will be under the new building code.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any problem with staff as changing it from 18 to 12?
None whatsoever.
Is the rest of the commission okay with that, reducing it to 12, the extension?
Motion on the floor, do you want me to rescind my motion?
Just you can amend it.
You can amend it.
All right, I'm going to amend it, but 18 months was still good, but I'll go ahead and amend it to the 12, since this is in Vice Mayor Casello's district, I'm just saying, you know.
Okay. Who had the second, the secondor agree?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so the motion unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the Item B and C is request the table to...
Okay, the item B and C is request to table to June 17th and July 1st.
Right, sir, right.
And we've asked to be pulled by Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. The reason I had him pulled, sir, is just to have both items, B and C table, motion to table both items.
Second?
I have a motion, second to table both items, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, till the motion ends.
Thank you.
City managers report, review, and discuss the city's short sale policy.
Nancy, Director of Development, in the mayor's and the city manager's absence. This item was brought back in front of the commission at your request, Mayor, so I'm happy to discuss with you any items you might.
Thank you, yeah. The reason I brought that up is that the last meeting, we, you know, we did approve two short sales, and one of them was for, I believe, $64,000, and the second one was for $45,000, and we approved those short sales, so under our program, the city would recoup $4,000 or 8% of whatever the money was, which, and I think within, in the last two years, I guess it is now, that we've had like five short sales. And my, and my, the only reason I'm bringing this up is that, you know, when we took, let's see, from the, from the 65, $64,000 one, we got $5,000 back, which leaves around $59,000, $58,000, and when you do a short sale, the second mortgage has to be paid off, so I assume we give that money to the bank. Is that correct?
That is not correct. The funds that are returned to the city on the short sale are returned into the SHIP program, which is the state housing.
Yeah, but that, the return is 5,000.
Correct, that goes back into the SHIP program.
The city, but how about the other 59,000?
That's, that's forgiven, it's lost in the short sale, just as the bank, Jim, do you want to explain that?
Does it go to the bank?
Well, the way we've done it in the past, it does not go to the bank, the, what we're talking about is something that is a lien on the property. The lien is released, the value of the lien, the lien is released, so the property is cleared of that lien. And what we've done, I believe, in the past cases, is we've also relieved the borrower, the property owner, of the obligation to repay the loan.
Right.
That's correct. Yes.
So, that's an option available to the commission. You could release the lien, but not release the, the personal obligation on the note itself, but you've not done that in the past.
Where does the money that, the 5,000 that was returned to the city come from?
It came from the state, through the state housing program. It's part of SHIP.
No, 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 what the mayor means is, how does the city get the remaining money? The money that it's agreed to take? Where does that, where does the funds come from? That comes at the closing, when the, when, usually in most of the cases, there's a new buyer for the property. When that closing takes place, there's a check cut to the city from the closing proceeds.
I see. So, there's a new, a new value set on that home, and then when they close, we get 5,000 off the top?
Correct.
Okay, so, if that's the case, then we didn't lose any money.
That's correct, well, it's...
You've lost the difference from the amount that you have the lien for.
Right.
Down to the $5,000.
So, that's, like I said, around 58 or $59,000, right?
That's right.
So, we lost that.
You, it's, it's...
Because we put that up as a second mortgage.
That, you've lost that.
It's gone, yes.
Yeah, so, if you look at that, that's, there was like, you know, 50-some thousand, and then the other one came out to another 40, it's like almost $100,000 that we lost out of our SHIP money?
That's correct, but I think a couple of important points. The alternative is that the house goes into foreclosure, and then you have to pay the attorney fees to fight to get some portion of the foreclosure back to the city, which may or may not occur. A short sale is a sure thing, you know, you're going to get a percentage of the short sale. It also keeps the house occupied, it doesn't go into vacancy during foreclosure, like it would in a foreclosure. And remember that the purpose of the SHIP program, that money is, is never repaid in its ideal form, it just rides with the mortgage and is forgiven at the period of time.
After 10 years.
Well, initially it was 10 years, now it rides with whatever the mortgage term is, so if the mortgage is 30 years, it's going to stay there for 30 years.
Okay, so we never get that, that money just signed there, and it just goes out, and...
Right.
And next year, the state will send us some more money?
Exactly, if the home were sold during that period of time for a profit, then that would be repaid, if it were sold for a profit, and that has happened in the past, in the good years, that, that was a self-funding program.
You're losing either case.
I guess...
You are losing.
You're losing either case.
It's, I understand the idea of the program is to help people to get into a home, okay, but then we're hoping that they'll stay there, so we can improve these neighborhoods and bring up the value of the entire neighborhood. However, we've done, five of these have not come to pass, I don't know how many have been successful in the last two years, but I just wonder if we're really, are real, really vet the people we're giving these loans to, to see if they're really, can kind of hope that they're going to stick around for 10 years or so.
Well, let's put it in context. We have had 191 homes come through the program, 191, with five on short sale, seven have gone either through foreclosure or through the death of the primary owner of the property. That's a 4% loss on the funds that were given to us from the state. So, it really is not a dramatic impact on the program, and it, it is the circumstances of where the market was at that point in time.
What's the time limit for that, 91 homes? 191 home?
That was from the beginning of the program, which was 1997.
97.
Right, through present, that, we've received, that program has funded over $5,280,000 in mortgages.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Since time changes, and the markets change, is there, let's see if this is the right terminology, is there an update way of reevaluating? In other words, I understand what the mayor's saying, and I agree with what the mayor's saying, and it's wonderful to help, but then you experience some bad times, and maybe we, I'll phrase it this way, have to reevaluate the contract that is being presented to people who get this opportunity? In other words, make it tougher, make it stricter.
This is, it's a pretty strict program. Your community improvement staff are former bankers, and I have to tell you that when people come in here to get a SHIP or a CDBG-funded loan, they have a thorough check done. That's why the money doesn't fly out the door, and occasionally you'll see us up here going, we have a timeliness issue, especially with HUD, on spending the money fast enough, because there is a very strict criteria that we follow in order to fund people for this. Not everyone is eligible for the program, not everyone wants to participate in the program. So, I, I agree with you that the program has to be evaluated over time, we have to meet the requirements of the program and the state's regulations and rules about how it's administered as well.
So, you said what I believe, in other words, the program initiates, just like Medicare started, and other programs started, HUD started, and every X amount of years, call it 10 years, you need to reevaluate.
Right.
If it's going forward in the right direction.
And the state hasn't funded this very heavily, in fact, in 2010, I don't believe we received any money for SHIP. They started funding again in, in 2011, and this year, as Representative Berman mentioned, this will be one of the highest years funded from SHIP, I think, in the past seven years from the state.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, two questions. Did I hear right, the total of 191 homes since the beginning?
That's correct.
How, is there any way of guessing how many more might fall by the wayside and come before us?
We keep a close watch, we have a list of all those homes that may be falling into hardship, we reach out to people regularly to find out how they're doing, especially if we notice that they're falling behind, and we have an indication, and we do credit counseling with them, we, we do an outreach to them, and we have saved many a homeowner, we have done quite a few subordinations that have helped them refinance at lower rates, which has helped them keep their homes. So, we're trying to be very proactive on those that we're watching. It's hard to know, the banks take so long now. That's the other thing, is that, you know, you've only collected money on two of the four that have been done since the policy was adopted, there was one that was done before the policy was adopted that was also collected in 2009.
Well, let me just throw some numbers out there, less than 20, less than 10?
In foreclosure, yeah.
That'll, that'll eventually out of the 191, how many additional ones? Five, 10, 20, just roughly?
To foreclosure or short sale?
Short sale, whatever, what, just go bad.
Just go bad. Well, since you've only had seven, from 97 to two...
So, this isn't going to be a big...
I don't see it being that big, you know? These are not houses in one project, these are houses that are spread out throughout the community. A couple of the short sales that you've done were actually in Renaissance Commons.
Okay, that kind of may answer my second question, the SHIP money, just informational, SHIP money is not just for homes, but it also for condos and townhouses?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Nancy, this, this couldn't go the way like the CRA program did, where we lost like, almost like a million dollars, 1.2 million on it. Is it the same type of idea, same type of program?
It is not, because it is a more diverse program, it's spread out all over the city, it's not money, it's money that's funding one single project. That was an unfortunate circumstance that happened with the CRA, where it started out as a for-sale project, and then ended up into a rental project, and, I mean, it just was a tailspin.
Is this something that we need to do because we're an entitlement city, or just, just something the city does on its...
The short sale policy or the SHIP program?
The SHIP program.
The SHIP program is because we are an entitlement, we go out for that, we, we offer that to our citizens as a kind of an economic incentive, if you will, so first-time home buyers can afford to buy houses.
That's something we, that's a policy we need to do because we take that SHIP money?
Yes.
Okay. I personally, you know, I, it's a noble idea, but I really don't think the city should be in the business of lending money for homeownership. I, I don't believe in that, I believe that should be, you know, credit unions and banks, it's noble, hopefully it, you know, we don't get burnt. Thank you.
Somebody else? Thank you for your input, appreciate it, I think that's what we wanted to know. Okay, next time, discuss the possibility of merging the city and CRA operations per the request of Vice Mayor Casello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was pleasantly surprised with the report that I asked that came back, the staff...
Of course I'm going to. I like my job.
I appreciate that, all right. The CRA staff and the city staff met, and as you see in the backup material there, the locations, special events, marketing, economic development, finance, and accounting, and it's all positive, all positive feedback that, that we got here. The only thing I'm, I'm asking tonight, it's not so much a merging, it's a blending of the two entities, and I would ask that we have, we allow this to go a little further for a little more further discussion, a little more detail, and we can build on it and then make an informed decision, but the preliminary results that I get back here, and in your backup materials, you see it, it's, it's very positive, and I think we should continue the course and, in the discussion.
Thank you. Well, I would just say that I am definitely opposed to combining the CRA and the city, I think that really just adds a whole lot of confusion. The CRA works on a different state statute than the city, and the CRA has been operating in outstanding manner, and it just caused a lot of confusion, and I'm still a thing, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Commissioner Murkrow?
And I concur with the mayor, emphatically. We have excellent, and if you remember a few meetings ago, everyone here applauded the CRA. What's important to the CRA is also the employees of the CRA. They're trained a certain way, they have their expertise, the city has their expertise. The idea of having a meeting of the mind and having diverse opinions is healthy, but I think Vivian, and Susan, and Mike, et cetera, have done an excellent job, and I, I agree with the mayor, it's working, let's keep it that way.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'm on the same page that you are, I oppose it, and I, I don't want to say it like this, but emphatically, I do agree with Commissioner Murkrow.
By the way, by the way, Commissioner McCray and I basically get along.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I, I believe, as kind of being stated, that they, there's two separate missions here, and, and so those, there's needs to be a little dynamic tension, and they're both got to kind of pull in different directions to some degree, so I'm opposed to, you know, the blending, which I think would dilute everything, but there may be specific, if Commissioner Casello came across with specific points, that, then I would probably support looking further into specific items, such as an office location or something, but, but just in general, blending, I'm, I'm not in favor of it.
Go ahead.
Before I go down in flames here, thanks for the segue, Mike. The location of offices, the CRA leases space on North Federal Highway, the annual cost for rent is approximately $76,000 a year, with a built-in 4% escalator clause in it. There's been talk about the staff moving into the west wing up here, we could possibly rent that location out, recruit some of that $76,000 in rent, a positive. Special events, right here from staff, it could serve beneficial for the city and the CRA to blend staff and create a special events department that would be responsible for the coordination of all events within the city. The city does not have any special event staff currently, most events are coordinated through our recreation department, which often proves taxing on staff time. Marketing, the same holds true for the possibility of blending staff resources into a marketing division. The city could benefit from some of the marketing expertise in the CRA, and vice versa. Economic development, the CRA serves a targeted market within the district, this will remain true, even if the functions are combined. We're not taking away anything from the CRA. All the things are positive, we're just talking about blending some of the services together to feed on each other. Nothing negative here, nothing about dismantling, nothing about taking away jobs from the CRA, it's about combining resources and making the city better, and probably at a cheaper deal too, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have to be really careful, the CRA is not allowed to do anything the city would normally do on their own, so when you combine them, that really makes everything fuzzy to me, and, and again, if it isn't in the plan, you don't do it. If you went to that, if you went to the CRA instructional thing, which I think you did, you know that it's really a touchy situation, so I think we got three to two here, not to go that route.
Correct. Three, no, it's four to one.
Well, he wants specific ones, but...
No, I'm Mike.
Yeah, but he'd want a, he'd want a specific one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's least three to one, so that's enough.
Taking a vote on it?
Three, two.
Are we going to take an official vote on it?
You can if you want, it's just to discuss it.
You'll kill it.
You want to vote?
I vote.
You want to make, something on making...
No, it's fine, Mr. Mayor, it's fine, I just wanted to get my point across, I think it's very important, I think people should read this, all positive stuff coming from both the CRA and the city staff, working together, positive results. I don't understand, you know, Mr. Murkrow, you talked earlier about moving forward, positivity, all that good stuff, here it is, right here, the staff itself wrote it, and to, to shoot it down without even further discussion, letting the staff further discuss it, to refine it, make it better, I, I think it's, it's a shame. Thank you.
Talk is cheap, and that's where I'm at, talk is cheap. You give a lot of questions, you give no answers, you give a question mark after each statement, or supposedly statement you make.
Well, Mr. Murkrow, if you had backup...
I'm not finished, I'm not finished.
Let's not, let's not discuss any further, it's already been three to, three, at least three, not to go that route.
There he goes, come on, you said no to me.
If Mr. Murkrow had backup material, he would read what the staff said, I'm not saying that.
Maybe you should know how, your brain versus my brain, you lose.
Order in the...
Excuse me? Excuse me?
Order, order. Please, I've got order here at the thing.
Your brain.
The next thing is proposed ordinance number 14007, first reading, approve ordinance amending city code of ordinances 4-33 and 16-39 to permit leased dogs at JC, Boynton Lakes, Dewey, and Intercoastal Parks, and we get a motion to put it on the floor, and then we got some people want to speak to it.
And I, and I need to read the title once you've done that.
Oh, go ahead. You want to go ahead and read now?
I'll do it now. Ordinance 2014007, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part 2, Chapter 4 of the city code of ordinance is entitled Animals and Fowl, by specifically the City Code of Ordinances entitled Animals and Fowl by specifically amending Section 4-33 entitled Damaging Property Presence in the City Park or Recreation Areas Prohibited to Permit Leash Dogs in J.C. Park, Boynton Lakes, Dewey and Intercoastal Parks, amending Part II, Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Parks and Recreation by specifically amending Article II, Division II, Section 1639 entitled Animals prohibited to permit leashed dogs in J.C., Boynton Lakes, Dewey and Intercoastal Parks, provided for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and providing an effective date.
This is Proposed Ordinance 14-007 on first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Under discussion, somebody in the public would like to address this. You may come forward.
Christina Ncinoza, 68, Paxford Lane. I am a resident of the Boynton Lakes North Community, which the park of Boynton Lakes, located at 300 Boynton Lakes Boulevard, is right in the middle of the community. People even actually mistake your park for our community, which is great. But I was absolutely thrilled when I saw this ordinance as a possibility. I had called some months ago, inquiring if there was going to be a dog-friendly park or if we could make Boynton Lakes Park dog-friendly, and I was told that it was in the works, and this is what I'm hearing. So I come to you today in support unequivocally of this park becoming a dog-friendly park. I am a dog owner. My dog and I walk at least two or three miles every night, and I have never stepped foot in that park because my dog is not allowed in the park. So most of the time, when I'm out on the street, I'm out with him. As for issues that may come up, say, people say they'll put their dogs off-leash, or they'll say they won't pick up. Well, in reality, yes, you will have some people that will do that, but that will be the vast minority of it. Most people who own pets consider them part of the family. Most people who own pets take care of them, walk them on leashes, because it's just as dangerous for the person that's around, for my dog to be loose, but it's even more dangerous for my dog, for him to be loose because of people who would run him over or do other things. And we live in a city that, from what I've looked in the booking blotter, most of the residents haven't been listed, so they're law-abiding. And we're people that just want to be able to go with our dogs to different places, and would ask that you support this first reading and take it on to the next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Anybody else wish to... Yes.
I'm all for pets and dogs, love them, everything like that. I do think that this is a good idea, but we're coming up with the county in a short time about the proposal of getting those four and a half acres with a possibility that if they're not able to sell it, that they'll sell it to Boynton Beach for 100 grand, and to wait until, to postpone this, until that part, that we get the four and a half acres, to make that a dog-friendly park, and keep this as is. Okay?
Thank you.
I like to postpone this. That's my reading on it. I'm not against it, just postpone it until we see what happens. It's only a few months away.
Sir, just for your information, there is works that have a dog park way before that. It's in the making now, behind Target, right?
Target.
Behind Target and Best Buy, that the developer has got that in his plans over there. So we will have a dog park in the real near future.
Yeah, so then why, why do this?
Just to make it neighborhood-friendly, so you don't have to travel to do it. You can just walk out of each... Have them make closer, have them four different parks around the city to make it more user-friendly.
Still think we ought to postpone it pending the four and a half acres to see what happens. I'm all for it, but just let's...
I got your, I hear your proposal.
Okay.
I don't have a comment.
Any other comments?
I'm through.
I have a motion, a second.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Casella.
Hi.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray.
Hi.
The vote is 5-0.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution R14-044 on approved the land swap agreement with Del Lago Ventures, Inc. of Atlanta, Georgia, for the relocation of the city's lift station number 303 and construction of a new lift station in coordination with the construction of a racetrack gas station at the southeast corner of Hypoluxa Road and Seacrest Boulevard. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Public discussion.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, coming to the podium, I'd just like to apologize to the dais and the people out there for my emotional outburst, but I get very passionate at times, so I apologize.
We accept that.
You're only human.
What did he say?
Would you like, anybody like to address this issue? Somebody want to talk to it. No, go ahead. He's going to let you go first.
My name is Scott Brown. I'm a taxpayer in the city of Boynton, and I'm the adjacent property owner to where the racetrack gas station is going. I'd like permission to give...
Lift up your microphone.
...a copy of this to the...
Lift your microphone.
At least...
What's his relationship?
He might need one more.
Sir, when you get back to that mic, if you could just pull it up a bit so you're speaking directly into it. Thank you.
I have tried to participate in the process to purchase this piece of property and/or make an offer on it, a trade, or whatever the rules to this game are, for four or five months. What you have in front of you is a list of emails, and one of them is from Ross Herring at the county to the racetrack gas station, basically offering to assist them with discussions with the city of Boynton Beach to relocate a lift station. On the second page, there is emails from Ross Herring to the town manager, basically asking for an invitation from Mr. Griffin from Racetrack to get a contact person in the city of Boynton Beach. On the next page, you have Mr. Griffin from Racetrack responding back to the county, saying he met with a fellow down here named Michael Low, and that they had a good meeting. The next page, you have the town manager gets back to Ross Herring at the county, and Ross Herring getting back with her. Anyhow, there was communication between the town manager and the county on behalf of Racetrack. Racetrack has had the opportunity to work with the city. They're the only ones that had an opportunity to work with the city, and I would like an opportunity to work with the city to make an offer to purchase this property. From what I read, Racetrack has offered you guys 8,000 bucks for a piece of property. You can't buy a good used car for that, okay? I will pay many, 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 many times that for that property. I, on several occasions, had got a hold of the town manager's office and asked how to participate in this process, and the staff in the town manager's office put me in touch with somebody named Chris down in utilities. And then I called back, when I didn't get any satisfaction there, because he basically said it wasn't, you know, the decision wasn't up to him. They had me get a hold of a fellow over here in development named Scott. He tried to help me. He said, you know, it's, there's nothing he can do to help. I would like an opportunity to purchase the property from the city for a lot more money than what Racetrack is willing to pay. This piece of property is not in the town of Boynton Beach. You guys don't have a dog in the fight. It's in the town of Lantana, just a piece of property you own. I think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers to allow me and other people like me that might want to bid on this to get the best results for the taxpayers of the city of Boynton Beach. And I'd ask you to postpone this and direct staff to work with me and other people like me in putting this thing through a fair bid process where the city of Boynton can get the best results. Thank you very much.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What do you, if you own the property right now, what would you do with the property?
What would I do with it?
Yeah.
I would, I fully expect, I am contesting through the inspector generals, the process of the purchase from Racetrack to the county. Nobody knows how that's going to come out. If the contract gets thrown out, I very well may be the high bidder, and I'll be developing the piece of property around it. If not, I would own the piece of property. I'll inventory it.
Sir, you didn't answer my question. I asked you, if you right now own it, here's your property. What do you want to develop on it?
Well, I can't develop that one little piece of property.
Well, what do you want to do?
I want to own it.
And then what?
And I want to pay this, I want to pay the most money for it.
That's...
I don't know that you have to have anything just to own it.
Okay, I'm not here to debate you, but...
No, I understand.
Yeah.
You're asking me what my future plan would be. If I develop my property in the future, I would, I would move the lift station myself. I have a piece of property right next door the lift station could go to. That's all anybody else is saying, is if they develop it, they'll move, you know, they'll move the lift station. I'll tell you the same thing, and I'll give you a lot more money, not a little bit, a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to address...
Mayor, could I just make one comment? It may be of benefit to the commission to look at page 222 on your agenda. 222, which is a graphic of the property that we're talking about, there's really two pieces of property that are in play here. One is a larger piece of property in which the city has a lift station in the middle of it. And you'll see the lift station depicted as this small, little, irregular-shaped property in the middle of a larger piece of property that the county had declared to be surplus and has, is under contract or has closed with Racetrack. I think that's the property that the gentleman who just spoke talked about. He's contesting that process, that decision-making action by the county commission, Board of County Commissioners. The only thing we're talking about that involves the city is the area where the lift station, an operational lift station is, and we're swapping that for a piece of property within that same general, larger piece of property. And Racetrack has agreed, as part of the swap, to pay the city a small amount of money for the inconvenience of making the swap. Plus, they're going to relocate the lift station, so we're going to end up with the same lift station, new and improved, that we have right now, plus $8,000.
Yes, sir.
If I may, my name is Mark Perry, actually, represent Mr. Brown who just spoke to you. And thank you very much for that explanation, because this piece of property, even though it's not very valuable, is in the center of the properties in dispute. Mr. Brown and Racetrack are actually not getting along right now. They have very many, many arguments as far as the process that we went through with Palm Beach County. We are contesting the process, and if necessary, we'll be filing a lawsuit against the county to set aside the process that was utilized, where Racetrack was determined to be the highest bidder for this piece. So what ends up happening is if you award this by this resolution, and my client prevails, he's going to now have to deal with Racetrack, who owns a piece of property right in the center of what we're disputing. So what I'm asking is just a 60-day delay to be able to have the property owners or the contested parties to be able to work out a resolution with this without doing any further litigation, because bottom line, we are not getting along. I think we need to talk, have discussions, to see if there is a resolution to this, because otherwise, my client has no recourse but to litigate, and that's not really what we want to have to do. I don't know if it's necessary to relocate this lift station today or tomorrow. I think the idea is, the city wants to come out of this whole situation whole. My client is willing to go to contract with the city as a backup contract, giving you the same situation, will relocate the lift station, and even probably giving you more money for this property. So I'm asking for a delay. It'll be no harm to the city. You'll end up the same place, a better lift station, maybe some more money, but a little bit of delay, and we do not have to deal with any litigation, and please do not consider it as a threat at all. I'm just saying, that's just what we're dealing with today. We don't get along right now, you know, it's Racetrack and Mike Brown. And I'm just asking, give us time to see if we can work something out. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, are you a third party?
No, I represent Mr. Brown. I'm Mark Perry. I'm his attorney.
You're the attorney for Mr. Brown?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's what I wanted to find out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Gary Brandenburg. I do represent Del Lago Ventures, which is a subsidiary of the Racetrack Corporation. And we have worked out with the city a very fair transaction. This is really just a utility relocation that happens any time a piece of property is developed. The only difference here is instead of you having an easement, you actually own the little piece of property that the lift station on. So the deal says that we'll give you a new piece of property that's comparable to the one you already have. We will pay you the value of that piece of property, so you get a new piece of property plus get paid for it. Plus, we will spend, it's estimated as $100,000 to build you a new lift station that will be brand-new, meeting all your technical requirements. You really don't get a better deal than that when it comes to a utility relocation. Mr. Brown is right. We have problems with Mr. Brown. The county put the larger piece of property out for bid, and Racetrack was a successful bidder. And ever since, Mr. Brown was not the successful bidder, he has been at every possible meeting, taken every possible appeal that he can to try to stay in the way of Racetrack, so that ultimately, he could have the property. The property's already sold. Racetrack owns the property. It's a big company. They're not going to be extorted by Mr. Brown in this manner if he comes to you or the inspector general or the attorney general of the United States. We're just going to move forward with, on a property and a project that's going to be a very good one for that corner, is going to make it look really nice. And again, we very much appreciate you and your staff's cooperation in helping us relocate the utilities.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I just wanted to indicate, if the commission is prepared to move forward and approve the agreement, I do have one minor modification to it that's been worked out since we became aware that a temporary easement that was referred to in the document is already in existence. So once there's a motion made, if it's an emotion to approve, I'm going to ask you to add some language, and I'll read the language to you at that point.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Add the...
Yeah, thank you. I'd like...
Go ahead.
I'd like the commission to amend paragraph 26 to reflect that there is an existing easement on the property, and that would be referred to as Exhibit C. And that the easement would be released upon the completion of the replacement lift station. We would, the city would have no need for that easement at that point. But in its place, there would be recorded a replacement easement to permit the city to operate, maintain and access the new replacement lift station in a form substantially similar to the easement that currently exists. And we would do that language after the fact.
Does the motioner agree with that language?
You made the motion.
You made...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Does the seconder agree?
A motion, the second to agree, to amend paragraph 26.
Thank you.
Does the applicant agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Just point of clarification, so this is owned, this property's been sold, and it's, is it Meadows Commercial Properties? Who owns that property now? The county, does the county still own it, or is it actually...
The county has all the... Del Lago Ventures. Del Lago Venture is a subsidiary of Racetrack Corporation, who is going to build the new convenience store and service station on the property.
All right, well, it still shows a property, it still shows it's owned by Palm Beach County. How long ago did this occur?
Oh, the closing just occurred in the last three weeks, two weeks. They're generally two or three months behind on changing those.
Right. Okay, but the county, you, your client definitely owns it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Go ahead.
So we've given up this easement right to get a, and we're just going to change the, into another easement? Is that... We're just going to swap. Just swap easements? Okay.
Okay, this is Proposed Resolution Number 14-044. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. So the motion unanimous. I believe that's everything except the...
One document, and it's way down for signature.
Brand promise statement. Breeze into Boynton Beach, America's gateway to the Gulf Stream. We adjourn.